Good evening. This is the Coeur d'Alene Planning and Zoning Commission. And this is our July meeting. It's Tuesday, July 8th. Shannon, would you do the roll call, please?
Jordan?
Here.
Bowlby?
Here.
Ingalls?
Here.
Lutrip?
Here.
Missina?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
Connery?
Here.
O'Brien?
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So, I guess next on our agenda, we have approval of the June 10th meeting minutes.
I would motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay. So, we have motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Okay. So, the minutes are approved from a June 10th meeting. Okay. Next, we have public comments. And this would be in the event anyone in the public is here and they'd like to address the Planning Commission about an issue. Now, this would be an issue different than the hearing that we have tonight because there'll be time later for testimony on that. This would just be something of a general nature. Okay. Seeing none? Staff comments?
Don't have any tonight.
Okay.
Is this regarded as Sixth and Garden? Are you going to write the comments up or is it not?
Well, we're gonna... The hearing tonight is for the 602 Garden hearing. And then, we'll take public testimony when we do that hearing in just a couple of minutes here. Okay. I... We don't have Commission comments on here. I'd like to try and put that in again. But anyway, I'll make a Commission comment. Sitting to the right is Grant Connery, our student rep. And how many years have you been our student rep? Two or three?
Two.
Two. Okay. And this is his last meeting. He's off to college and on to big and great and exciting things. And, you know, if you want to pan the camera in on Grant, maybe his family would like to see him sitting here. But we're all really proud of him. He's done a great job here. Been an outstanding student rep. So, congratulations and best wishes to you.
Thanks.
You bet. Okay. Any other Commissioner comments?
Mr. Chair, I think we... When they put the cell tower... Heather, you mentioned the cell tower here a while back. The cell, cell tower.
I never noticed it.
Yeah. Weren't they supposed to remove the blue one? The one that...
I don't know if there was a certain timetable. The lease was expiring on it. Maybe you can comment. I think the lease was expiring and eventually, it's going to be coming down.
Taken down. Is that correct?
I'll have to check into it. That was an item that Sean brought forward. But I can check into it and bring that back to you.
It's not in a hurry. It'd just be nice to know about the timeframe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. So, we have one public hearing tonight. Oh, no. Wait. We have one other thing here. I jumped ahead here. We have approval of the findings for Lilac Glen. That was the hearing we had last month. That is Lilac Glen, item A-4-14. And that was approved and the legal staff did the findings. So, we need a simple motion to approve the findings for that.
I would motion that these very, very well-done findings that were presented by Commissioner Bowlby and very diligently put together by Planning and Legal and look fairly accurate to me, motion to approve.
I'd second that.
Okay. So, we have motion by Ingalls and second by Bowlby. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So, those findings are approved. Now, we're down to the public hearing for tonight. The applicant is David Rucker. The location is 602 East Garden. This is a proposed zone change from R-17 Residential to Neighborhood Commercial. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, ZC-2-14. So, we'll have a staff report. And then, the applicant can come up to the podium and make their presentation. And then, we'll have some time for testimony from members of the public. You'll each have five minutes. And when I call your name, you can come up here to the podium where Tammy is and I'll briefly swear you in because it's quasi-judicial. And then, you can go ahead and give us our testimony, which we would be happy to hear. So, okay. Tammy, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. So, again, this evening, we have a zone change request from the R-17 zoning district to Neighborhood Commercial. And the subject property is located at the corner... At the southeast corner of Sixth and Garden Avenue and is the site of the old Central School. So, here's Garden Avenue. The building is located right here. There's an existing parking lot here. Just to get you familiar, the Social Security Office is approximately here. So, the applicant is David Rucker. And a little bit of background, the subject property is located at the southeast corner of Sixth and Gardens, 602 East Garden. And it is the former site of the Central School. It's an existing three-story brick building that was constructed in the early 1900s. And really, the zone change request before you tonight will actually, if approved, bring the activity into conformity, but the facility would remain non-conforming. And the applicant, again, is asking for a Neighborhood Commercial use. So, here's another photo of the subject property. So, again, we'll go through the findings that are going to be required to be completed by the Planning Commission. And the first one is that this proposal is or is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan policies. So, the comprehensive plan designation for this area is historical heart, and it is the stable established designation. Stable established areas are where the character of the neighborhood has largely been established and, in general, should be maintained. The street network, the number of building lots, general land uses are not expected to change greatly within the planning period. And this is the subject property located approximately here. This dark line is the historical heart boundary. And the purple area denotes this being designated as stable established. I've included in your staff report on page three, the paragraph that talks about historical heart. And also included are the comprehensive plan goals and objectives. I've pointed out a few of them, including Objective 1.14, efficiency, promote the efficient land use of existing infrastructure, thereby reducing impacts to undeveloped areas. And another one on page four, Objective 2.04, downtown and neighborhood service nodes. Prioritize a strong, vibrant downtown and compatible neighborhood service nodes throughout the city. Objective 2.05, pedestrian and bicycle environment. Plan for multiple choices to live, work, and recreate with comfortable walking, biking distances. And the last one I'll point out, Objective 3.1, historic preservation. Encourage the protection of historic buildings and sites. The next finding is that public facilities and utilities are or are not available and adequate for the proposed use. The public utilities and facilities were reviewed by staff, and they are adequate because this is an existing building. And the applicant had come to staff to talk with them several months ago about making some exterior improvements, improvements on the site. And when staff looked into this request, I found that the zoning didn't allow the uses that were in the building, which were professional office and some personal service uses, which was a dance studio, I believe, and photography. So, really, this request, again, is just to bring the activity into compliance. And so, it's not going to impact stormwater streets, water, and services or fire protection. That the physical characteristics of the site make or do not make it suitable for the request at this time. So, here's the existing building as it is currently. There are no topographical or other physical constraints that would make the subject property unsuitable for the request at this time. The next finding, that the proposal would or would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood with regard to traffic, neighborhood character, and/or existing land uses. So, the engineering department reported that the proposed zone change will not impact traffic generation from the subject property. And this is the zoning... The current zoning on the property is R-17. And that's the subject property right here. You can see on the south, that's also R-17 with a few other parcels with that zoning. To the west is the R-8. And to the east across Seventh Street is also R-8. And the zone change was done in 1986. And the original zoning was R-8. It went from R-8 to R-17 at that time with a special use permit for a parking lot. Then, in 1984, a daycare special use permit or community education for stepping stones daycare was requested and approved in 1984. And because that period had lapsed, that special use permit expired at that time. So, again, that the proposal would or would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood with regard to the character of existing land use. The land use is civic, as it is an existing school site. To the south is also a civic, which is the site of the Social Security Office. There are a few churches denoted here in the other blue, which designates the civic uses. And we've got some multifamily and duplex housing. And those are the findings. We sent out 75 notices. And I believe we got one response back in the mail. And there are no recommended conditions for this request. So, again, the Neighborhood Commercial is meant to be a smaller-scale, low-impact commercial that transitions between the residential and a C-17 zoning district. There are some permitted uses that are noted in your staff report. They would include retail, personal service, commercial and professional office, medical and dental, daycare, and residential, and parks. So, the applicant is asking for the Neighborhood Commercial to bring this activity into conformity. And that's the conclusion of my staff report, unless you have any questions.
Okay. Looks like we have a couple of questions.
Then, where else do we have Neighborhood Commercial in our community?
The one... The most recent one you had was off of Government Way, north near, I believe, north of Ironwood on Government Way, the Chinese Massage. That was an existing single family, and they converted it for that use.
And as a Social Security, that's office building. Do they have a special use permit for that or...
They don't. That's administrative, so it's allowed in that zoning district.
Very good. Thank you.
And Tammy, one thing that one really notices is the existing potential in the R-17 zoning district and then the special use possibilities in R-17. And then, you go and look at the Neighborhood Commercial, and it's definitely more limited. And actually, to me, that's a real plus for the Neighborhood Commercial zoning district and why we have it.
And they also have the hours of operation, between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. Parking is three parking stalls per 1,000. And as they proceed and go through the building permit process, then we'll require and make sure that they've met the parking requirement.
Right.
I was thinking food service was allowed in there, but I guess it's not, is it?
Yeah. I'm really kind of surprised. Yeah. Groceries? I thought we had grocery.
Actually, I think that's community commercial.
Oh, retail.
Community commercial. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else for Tammy right now? All right.
I've got a question. Tammy, on like the height and design standards, if it... If the building stays as it is, they have to abide by those if it's changed to a Neighborhood Commercial as well?
Actually, the facility would remain non-conforming, but the activity would be what would be conforming. So, they could leave the building as is. They wouldn't need to make any changes to it to meet the Neighborhood Commercial requirements.
So, the building could stay as is, let's say. Change it to a Neighborhood Commercial. But if they choose to knock the building down...
Then, they would need to conform to the requirements of Neighborhood Commercial.
Okay. So, if the building stays right now and the maximum height is 32 feet, if this building is over 32 feet, let's say, and they want to leave the building as it is, it'll be okay?
Correct.
Any of the other requirements as far as parking, hours of operation, and things like that, if the building just stays as it is?
With the zoning, they would need to comply with the hours of operation and make the parking conform.
With the existing building staying as it is? Okay. So, the only difference really is the height?
Correct.
If the building stays as it is? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Thank you, Tammy. Is the applicant here? Want to come on up? State your name and address there, and I'll swear you in.
My name's Dave Rucker. And my address is 1519 Vista Del Mar in Ventura, California.
Okay, Dave. And you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay. Go ahead.
Actually, I did not have a very formal presentation for you. I think Tammy did a much better job than I can do of summarizing how we got here. Actually, how we really got here is I bought the building in 2006. And if you remember 2006, the real economy and the real estate market was a little different than it is today. And it was one that I bought, I think, more out of my heart than my brain. And I love the building, but it really has not been an economically powerhouse for me, as you might guess. That being said, I've got it, and I want to figure out a way to keep it viable and keep it... Keep the neighborhood up. Really, the usage that's been in there since I've owned it, since 2006. Karen with her Pilates or yoga studio has been there all along. There's been a Pilates studio. There's been a number of photographers. We still have one existing photographer. But during stronger economic times, each of the classrooms was occupied by a photographer. There was actually a land use planner, has not had an office in there. I never heard any complaints from the neighborhood from those occupancies. And over the time I've owned the building, I put a new roof on it. I've renovated the... If anybody who's ever been in the building, it's a very nice old building. Redid the wood floors, put perioded lighting, tried to kind of restore it back to the way it was. Still without a real game plan of, well, how I'm ever going to make any money on it. And so, at this point, I really just want to keep it viable. And I recognize that this zone change is not probably the... May not be the longest-term, smartest move I've ever done because it's really restricting some of the things you can do with the property more than expanding. And I'm sure the neighbors, and I don't blame them, I would be very concerned if I got this flyer on this zone change of this old building. But the zone change that we're asking for, you know, it restricts the height, it restricts hours of operation. It makes it less... You know, I heard somebody concerned about he's going to tear it down and build condos. Well, I think you can already do that. So, this is not about me wanting to tear it down and build condos. It's just about trying to figure out a way to keep the building viable so I can make it work. This all started with me wanting to... I don't know if I can... Is there a way for me to go back on the slides? The one where the front of the building, kind of show you... Yeah, that one doesn't great. But in front of there, if you've been by it recently, from the sidewalk to the building, it's asphalt, block top. Okay? And down the rest of the street, there's a sidewalk and a parking strip with trees. And that's really what this all started with. I wanted to put in... Tear out the asphalt, put in a sidewalk with some trees, and replace the front steps. And so, in the process of trying to get a permit to do that, it was discovered that it was not in compliance. And so, we thought, well, let's address it, deal with it, and try to figure out a way to move on. So, that's why I'm here.
Okay. Hold on just a minute. Do we have any questions? Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Rucker, to be clear, as I understand, you know, this action tonight, you know, making this zone change, you know, doesn't guarantee that that beautiful old building stays for the next 50, 60 years or whatever. It doesn't preserve it. But you're saying that's your intent.
Right.
What if it weren't approved? Then what would you do?
You know, I'll cross that bridge. I mean, I think then, I think I need to figure out a way to make it residential. I mean, that's ultimately what has to happen. And I would do that now, quite frankly, if I was in a better capital position. I think that there is a viable way to maybe convert those into condos or apartments and then maybe build some additional residential units where the parking lots are, put parking in the back. I think it could be a very nice project. It would be good for the neighborhood, preserve the building. But it takes a lot of money. And I'm just not in a position right now to do that. And so, you're right. I mean, this zone change doesn't guarantee it'll be like that forever. But, you know, I don't know what guarantees we have on anything, you know? I really think that this reduces the exposure for dramatic changes over there rather than, you know, enhance the chance of something like that happening.
Okay. Anything else?
Do you have a question for Tammy? Tammy, I forgot to ask you on the requirements for Neighborhood Commercial. What about the windows facing the street and the amount of glass? I'm trying to find that here again. Would they have to do anything with that if the building stays the same? Or are those windows, the way they are, fine or...
It's fine exactly how it is. They wouldn't need to comply with that. If they tore the building down and rebuilt it, they would need to meet that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just one additional comment.
Sure.
Just, you know, in filling out the application for the zone change, you know, they asked, how does this fit in with the 2007 comprehensive plan? And Tammy cited several areas. As I read through it, I mean, you could almost... In almost every one of them, you could make an argument why this fits into your plan. And, you know, the urban forest, number one, I was hoping to plant trees in front of the building. I mean, that's... You know, the plan is to try to protect those trees and get more of them. That's what stimulated this whole thing, preserving old building. Even the Goal III recreation, 3.14, you know, yoga studio, Pilates studios in the neighborhood, that's recreation. And I think it... To me, it makes sense.
Okay. Thank you. So, we'll take public testimony. You'll have some time at the end for rebuttal if you want to. Okay. So, I'm going to go down my list here. First person I have is Joe Chapman. Have you in favor or do not wish to testify? Okay. Great. I'm sitting here wondering if you went to school in that building.
Harding School.
Oh, okay. Another Harding alumni. Okay. Let's see. Dave Wortman and Chrissy Wortman. I have you in opposition. Did... Are they here? Oh. Would you like to testify?
No. I was just wanting to know the end use of it.
Okay. B. Johansson. Have you in opposition? Would you like to testify?
No.
Okay. I have Jean. Is it Kendah? Okay. Have you neutral? Would you like to testify or not? Okay. Thank you. Debbie Long. Have you in neutral? Would you like to testify? Okay. Nancy Carberry. Is she here? Okay. Would you like to testify? Okay. I have you as neutral on it. Let's see. Stone Calf War...
Warrior Woman.
Warrior Woman. Okay. Come on up. Just state your name and...
Yes. I've tried to change that name twice for religious reasons, and I've been denied, so maybe U.S. federal court. So, my name is Stone Calf Warrior Woman. I live at 1421 North Ninth Street, apartment B4 here in Coeur d'Alene.
Okay. Now, real quick here. Hold your right hand up.
Oh, yes.
Do you swear the testimony you are going to give us will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
So, help me, God. Absolutely. And my relationship with the neighborhood is kitty-corner to the property in question is the Church of Truth, metaphysical church that I attend occasionally as my friend of 14 years, Reverend Marion Breckenridge is a member there. And in the basement of that school is... She has the... She's the co-founder of the Northwest School for Religious and Philosophical Studies, where master teachers of the different world religions come and teach the small amount of students that attend that school. And back when I was homeless, a homeless veteran in 1995, my VA psychologist, Dr. Mark Seeley, who also had gone through the Camp Shalperol program, which is a weeks-long American Indian immersion program, he recommended to me that I take yoga. And I didn't really give it much thought. And recently, here at the library, there's a video that I watched called Yoga Is. It's a transformational journey of this woman, Susan Bryant. She was 35 years old. Her mother was dying. She was having a very difficult time coping with that. And so, this takes... She went to India. And so, she has the master teachers of yoga in India interviewed. So, if anybody wants to understand about yoga, I would recommend that DVD, Yoga Is, that's available here at the library. So, I'm... I would like to take yoga. And since I feel like I am a part of that neighborhood, even though I don't physically live there, and I have a garden plot right around the corner at Sixth and Wallace, that I would certainly like to see this continue so that it is approved as a Neighborhood Commercial. Because my desire, since I was a teenager, and I'm 61, is to feel like I'm part of a neighborhood. And so, having this property be zoned Neighborhood Commercial would fulfill that. Thank you. Any questions?
No, I guess not. Thank you very much for your testimony. Okay. Linda Cook? Oh, Lindle Cook. I'm sorry. Lindle Cook? Okay. Carl Cook. Have you in favor or do not wish to testify? Okay. Let's see. I have Blair Williams and Jim Hanson. Would either one of you like to testify?
I'm a little short. Sorry. I'll come over here.
That's okay.
I'm Blair Williams, 824 East Pennsylvania Avenue. Excuse me.
Okay. Blair, and do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay.
As a past developer and a native of Coeur d'Alene who's recently returned, we would love to see nothing more than exactly what he's asking for, is to try and keep this property a viable part of our community. And as neighbors, we'd like to do whatever we can to help support the owner in making this property viable and pencil. I mean, ultimately, he's got bills to pay. And if this is what's necessary to better the property, then we are in full support of it and would like to get behind it and, like I say, help get tenants in there and make the building work.
Okay. Thank you very much. Oh, we have a question. Hold on a minute.
Just a quick question. If I could ask, you live within the 300-foot radius, the noticing radius of this?
I don't live within... I live on the southwest corner of Ninth and Pennsylvania. But it's still a walkable part of our neighborhood.
Understood.
And I'm a past developer of historic properties as well. You know, all he wants to do is fix it up, and he's got to come to you guys to fill out a piece of paper, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, then Jim Hanson? Jim, okay. Then I have Chris and Anna Taylor. Would either one of you like to testify? Okay, come on up.
Uh, my name's Christopher Taylor, 702 East Foster.
Okay, and you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but, nothing but the truth, so help you God? Okay, thank you, go ahead.
It's, it's more of a concern, um, that I have than anything. I, uh, I do love the building. My, my only concern is if the zoning change does happen, what that will allow for in the future, say the building is sold. It's kind of vague, um, as far as what the uses are, what can be brought in there. I personally, I can see the, the building for my house. Um, I don't want, say, a methadone clinic, a tattoo parlor, uh, you know, any of that stuff in the future. I understand, you know, David does want to, to keep the building, um, as it is and continue that use, but, um, the zone change in the future could really affect the neighborhood. That's my only concern. I mean, it, it's just kind of vague as far as what the uses are in the building that are allowed.
Okay. You saw the list of uses that-
I did, but there, you know, it, it says that it can be, um, medical, dental, retail. You know, what does the retail, I mean, could you have, um, say, a sex shop? I mean, just not, uh, is that allowed? That's, that's my only concern. You know, I don't want an Adam and Eve across the street from my, from my house.
Yeah.
You know, and I'm sure the, the rest of the neighborhood does. So that's all I'm saying is, if this zoning goes on for the future, what, what can we, can, can we see?
I don't know how an Adam and Eve fits in. I'm not, and I'm not sure if a tattoo parlor comes in under professional or not. I don't, or personal services. I guess that could be a tattoo parlor. Anyway.
Tammy, could you help us out on that?
Well, as far as the definition of personal service, it says activities that include the provision of informational, instructional, and similar services of personal but non-professional nature, such as driving schools, travel bureaus, and photography studios. So.
What about retail?
Activities that include the retail sale or rental from the premises of a wide range of general goods and merchandise primarily for personal or household use principally, uh, principally including apparel, appliances, sundries, and they exclude the sale of rental or motor vehicles, except for parts and accessories. Such activities are typical of department stores or variety stores.
And didn't we have an ordinance about, um, like Adam and Eves and that happened after we had the torch? Wasn't there some discussion on that with the downtown?
I don't think Adam and Eve was the same, looked at as the same as the torch lounge.
No, 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 no. But I'm just saying-
You're right.
-that has the same kind of, uh, venue poss- possibilities, is all I'm trying to share. I can't remember what came of that. We did have some long discussions whether or not there's an ordinance stating in a neighborhood commercial that such things could occur.
I think Warren would probably be the best to answer that, to be honest with you.
Right. And I think that there was something stated that I can't remember, but it was a little bit more restrictive than what one would think, but I can't say for sure. One thing this does do, that I've noticed, is under the special use permits, that you have religious institutions and schools, and that's it.
I see.
When you have under the special use permit, as it stands right now under R17, you have juvenile offenders facilities, you have, um, rehabilitative facility, um, you have group dwelling, you have, um, automobile parking, you have mobile home manufacturing, non-commercial kennel. So there's a little bit, and you have potential for residential density of the R34 district as specified, but that would be under special use permits. And that's the potential that, as it stands right now into the R17 zone, if you went to the special use permit, that could be a potential. So as this stands, thank you, as this stands, there's definitely more restrictive use under the neighborhood commercial, which is more definable than what you have under the R17.
Okay.
And for me personally, as a neighbor, I would feel more comfortable with the neighborhood commercial than an R17 zone with this building. I'm just sharing that with you.
Okay. Hey, thank you for your clarification.
I appreciate your testimony. Uh, Tammy, I don't want to spend too much time on this, but also, I think in this neighborhood commercial, there's a lot more restrictions on, what I want to say, you know, signage and, you know, light, lighting and things like that. It's just not like C17 commercial. There's some pretty strong restrictions on-
There are. For the neighborhood commercial, it has design standards. It talks about, as Tom had mentioned, 50% of the first floor wall facing arterial street must be glass, uh, requires sidewalks, uh, where the parking should be located, trash receptacles, um, and dumpsters having lids and enclosed structure. Uh, and then if it were to be destroyed and rebuilt, buildings must be designed with a residential character, including elements such as pitched roofs, lap siding, and wide window trim. And then it speaks to the lighting, so it does have some design standards.
So it has some lighting standards also, which is good, because that definitely helps the neighborhood.
But that's, I think I need clarification on that. That's why I asked, if it stays the way it is, nothing is torn down, there's a list of things here. So what does the applicant have to do, based on the criteria of what, uh, you know, commercial neighborhood zoning does say you need to do? And what doesn't the applicant have to do? So I think everybody has a clear picture, because we have a piece of paper here that says, these are the restrictions, and these are the things that need to be done. But that's why I brought up the question. The building is staying basically there.
As a non-
And it's a different matter if it comes down, but if it stays there, what does the applicant need to?
Staff would be looking at the hours of operation-
Okay.
-and looking at the parking requirement for the use.
So those are the only two things they have to actually do. The rest of the stuff that we have here, and I don't know if the, the public has this or not, they don't have to do any of the other things.
That's correct, unless they install lighting.
No, they don't have to do lighting. They don't have to do surface parking, uh, is in the rear ready, the trash area, it needs to be in the back. Uh, signage, they don't have to follow the signage, things that we have here, things of that nature.
If the applicant came forward and wanted to put a sign up, he would need to talk to the clerk's office and meet the sign requirements, per code.
Okay.
And I was under the understanding that if they did any additional lighting, they'd have to adhere to the neighborhood commercial design, even though, right now, if they don't change the lighting, that's the way it will be. But if they do change the lighting, they would, they'd have to come back in. And any kind of height or anything, they would have to have that by the height and design standards. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, moving right along. Uh, I have Steve McCray.
Steve McCray, 807 West Lake Shore Drive, Coeur d'Alene.
And you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
I knew it would be.
I'm testifying here today as a private citizen who attends yoga classes at the building. I have to throw in that my dad went to school at that building also. I think he'd probably be amused to see me stretching out on the floor where he was learning his reading and writing and arithmetic. But anyway, I believe that, uh, in this situation, this building is in a nice location for a mixed use. You do have the social security office nearby and several churches. And the concept of having a, a, a limited commercial area in a residential sort of neighborhood, I think is a good one throughout the city. It does take traffic away from the highly congested downtown areas and the other commercial areas. It's, it's, it's a fairly low impact, um, to the community. Um, and with respect to, you know, e- even if sometime in the future the building comes down and there's, uh, different uses, I think the location, um, will govern the type of retail businesses that might possibly go in there. I mean, I can't conceive, in a neighborhood like that, someone would want to put in an Adam and Eve if you, if you want to choose. That wouldn't be the right location. They wouldn't have the traffic. It wouldn't survive. It's the type of location that, you know, is sort of a low-key residential. And I think that's good for the city. I think, um, I would like to see that building stay. I know that's not a requirement, and we can't enforce that. Uh, but I think it's appropriate for the neighborhood, so I encourage the zone change.
Thank you, Steve.
Questions?
Uh, guess not. You're off, off the hook. Thank you, Steve. Okay, Roger Osborne. Would you like to testify, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, come on down. Let's go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
Roger Osborne, 605 East Garden Avenue.
Okay, and then, uh, do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Great, go ahead.
I've been hearing these people all testifying. I live right across the street from the, from that, that building. Nancy over here does, too. And what, I'm, I'm concerned about this retail sales. What, are they going to be open 10 o'clock or something like that, you know? Our bedroom's right in front of the building. What?
Oh, you're, you're asking us?
Yeah.
Oh. Tammy, what was that on the, on the code, on the hours on neighborhood commercial?
Six to 10. On residential use. 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
6:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Okay.
It's 10:00 PM. That's bed, bedtime for us. We go to bed at 9:00 o'clock.
Okay.
Sir, I-
Do you have anything else you wanted to add, sir?
Well, there's things I don't know about, is like, you know, does it, uh, does it affect the value of your house? I built that house with my own hands. And that's all, everything I got's in that house.
I, I think the neighborhood commercial that this, that this applies tries to address issues in that general area. It's more restrictive than, than regular commercial. I don't know if that's any, gives you any satisfaction, but it, it, I think we're trying to mini-, you know, minimize some of those effects. Uh, whether it be successful or not, as far as what time you go to bed and whatnot, our intent, I, I think the rule of the neighborhood commercial is not to expand it like, you know, a full commercial at, uh, you know, fourth and-
I know this may not happen immediately here, but like another fellow said, in the future, it opens the door for, for those things.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate your testimony.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, I have Roseanne Osborne. Would you like to come up? No, okay, thank you. Okay, then I have June, and I, is it Mick?
McLean.
McLean, I'm sorry. Okay. Uh, would you like to testify? Okay, thank you. I have you, uh, neutral. Then I have, uh, Chris Frankovich. Uh, I have you as, uh, in favor, and would you like to testify? Okay, come on up. Thank you.
My name is Chris Frankovich. I live at, uh, 12457 West Hughes Lane in Post Falls.
Okay, and, uh, you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
I'm here as, obviously, a private citizen. I don't live in the community, but I've been going to yoga at the studio since about 2001. Um, and I'm married to the woman that runs the studio and the yoga school, so I've, I'm, um, partial and biased. But one of the, a couple of things I'd like to say is that when Bob Getz owned stepping stones in that community, and I guess my testimony is more of a, of a, kind of a emotional or a community spirit, and the kids were in that school, and it is an old schoolhouse, it seemed to be consistent with the history of that site. And it was a good place. Bob did a great job. Karen rented a room for him, one of the rooms upstairs, and we renovated it. Bob didn't have any money. It was, you know, a very low-budget operation. And, um, she just built her yoga studio and school. Um, when Bob sold it to Dave Rucker, um, Dave started turning it into sort of a more quality place. So if you've been there, it's very nice. The, the spaces are good. Each room could probably use a little more work. And I understand that because of this issue, he's been constrained to do some of the improvements that he wants to do. And I think if he did, if he was able to do them, we would all benefit. The Garden Street School of Yoga, um, as Steve testified, is a, is a community place. There are a number of people from the neighborhood and Coeur d'Alene that go to classes there regularly, and it's a, a good place to be. When there were photographers filling it up and the land use people, the whole community felt very, it felt like a good, solid place. And I certainly understand what people are concerned about in terms of commercial. But as Steve also said, I think that where it is and the, kind of the, the feeling that the place has and the history is probably going to maintain itself as long as, um, he can make money on the leases that he's not making now, because it's mostly empty, except for, I think, now a photography studio and my wife's studio. So I just want to encourage you to think positively about this.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and Karen, um, can't quite make one of your names out, Spru- Okay, okay.
In favor or neutral?
Uh, she's in favor, too. That's his wife. Kelly Wolf, uh, have you as neutral? Doesn't say if you'd like to testify?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's everybody on my list. Is there anyone else who would like to testify that didn't sign on the sheet? Okay, um, Dave, you have five minutes to come up here, no, actually, 10 minutes to come up here if you have some rebuttal or would like to give us some other information. Okay.
You know, like, I totally, I, I was- If I was living next door, across the street, or in the neighborhood, I would feel, I would have the same concerns you have. And, you know, when, as long as I own the building, I, I am very confident that you'll be comfortable. There's no guarantee I'll own it forever, you know? I could get hit by a truck tomorrow. But I think that the neighborhood will dictate the businesses that will go in there. And I don't see that being a retail location of any significance. Um, I see it being offices, photographers, yoga studios, that type of thing. So I doubt that, I mean, let's face it, somebody that goes into business in there, it's got to pay me rent or whoever owns it, and they have to make money. And I don't think you're going to make money there with a lot of these occupancies that give you concern. Um, as far as, you know, the gentleman that lives across the street, I, I feel your concern. What I would say is, though, that if it stays residential, you have probably more concerns. If I rent that place out, make it residential, and we have, I don't know how many units you can put on the property, but under R17, you could probably put eight units on that property, 10 units, whatever it is. There's no guarantee that those people that live in those units will not blast their stereo at night, will not park their motorcycles on the sidewalk. I mean, the bottom line is, there's risk to everything, and residential carries risk. And so, um, with this zoning, I believe there's more constraints to give you some protection. I mean, there's a risk out there, I grant it, but I think there's risks to not changing the zoning. And I think when you weigh it out, I would hope you'd find that the, the, the scale tips in the favor of changing the zoning. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Rucker? All right, thank you, Dave. Okay, so that closes public testimony.
So. May I float an idea?
Yes.
So I, I, I'm pretty favorable with this, uh, idea. I'm not sure I'm going to make, make the motion. I guess I could, but this is one that I, I find somewhat unusual, where, uh, in this case, you know, the zone change, I believe, is actually, in an unusual way, kind of the status quo outcome, where, uh, it does the most to protect the neighborhood, in my opinion, having, you know, looked at the details and, and heard the, the testimony. So to try to protect the status quo, to try to protect the, the old building for some period of time, not forever, uh, the zone change is the, uh, action that gets it done. Uh, as Mr. Rucker points out, I think it, it somewhat hamstrings him and is almost a down- As Mr. Rucker points out, I think it, it somewhat hamstrings him and is almost a downzoning in terms of opportunities. And Mr. Osborne mentions, you know, that opens the door, but in, in a, in a sense, the door is open now. And in asking the question, you know, what happens if we don't approve it, you know, I think, you know, as a landowner, in Mr. Rucker's case, I, I think the parade of different ideas for, you know, what to do with that site could be anything from, you know, rehab facilities to boarding houses, to apartments, to any number of things that I think open the door even in a more threatening way to, to the neighborhood. And I think you made, Commissioner Bulby made some good points along those lines. So I think the zone change is the thing to do.
So are you making a motion?
I would motion that we approve the zone change to a neighborhood commercial.
We have your findings.
And then do you want to have staff do the findings, or?
I'll do the findings if you want, real quick.
Okay.
I, I would throw in the motion that Commissioner Messina makes the findings.
The only thing-
He's good at it.
Does anyone else want to make any comments?
No, go ahead.
We can still make some comments after they make their motion. We have time for discussion.
But I just like to make some comments because I think that-
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Osborne, you know, he had some justifiable feelings. And this, this is a, a change in, in what it is right now. It is an R-17. And when you look at the potentials of a R-17 for lots, if that's broken down, it can create some higher densities if the schoolhouse was to be torn down and created as a residential. And that's what I was trying to get across in that I think that the testimony that we got from certain individuals indicated that this is really better for the neighborhood as a, as a residential commercial, or a neighborhood commercial designation, and that it limited the densification of residential uses and all the variations under a special use permit that could be used within this actually prime piece of real estate in, in your neighborhood. So I, I would feel as a neighbor more comfortable with the neighborhood commercial than I would with the standing R-17 and the potentialities of special use permits down the road. And you'd have to come in more and more. So I, I don't know how to soothe your, your fear, but I would hope that, that you, you would, I hope that it all works out for the best with this. And I do feel that it will with this neighborhood commercial for you. So I'm ready for you to make.
First of all, I just wanted to ask, can everybody hear us out there? Because we were instructed the last time to speak into the mics.
Speak up.
And sometimes we don't.
Right. Can you hear us okay?
Just about.
Just about, okay?
We'll have to work at this.
Sorry. Yeah, we do. I need to get closer to the mic.
I think I wasn't speaking into it enough earlier, but I've been outside all day, and it's been, been a hot day, and I'm, I'm out of energy.
Apologize if you didn't hear me.
So I'll have to try and get closer to the microphone.
All right. This matter having come before the Planning Commission on July 8, 2014, and there being present a person requesting approval of ZC 2-14, request for zone change from R-17 residential at 17 units per acre to NC neighborhood commercial zoning district. Applicant is David Rucker, location plus minus 0.288, plus minus 0.288 acre parcel at 2202 North Government Way, and more commonly known as-
Excuse me, that's incorrect. It's 602 East-
I know. Yeah, it's, the address is 602 East Garden Avenue, formerly the old Central School site. I would adopt findings B1 through B7. B6 being that there were 75 notices, a public hearing were mailed out to all property owners within 300 feet of subject property. Public testimony was heard by the applicant and general public in support of and/or not support of the applicant's proposal. B8, that this proposal is in conformance with the comprehensive plan policies. The subject property is within the city limits. The comprehensive plan map designates this area as a historical heart, stable, established area. And I'm not going to get into the explanation of what historical heart of tomorrow is or the characteristics, but they are on page three of our package. The comprehensive plan and goals and objectives, the ones that I would include in this findings are goal number two, objective 2.01, business and image and diversity. Welcome support diverse mix of quality professional trade, business, and service industries while protecting existing uses of these types from encroachment by incompatible land uses. Objective 2.04, downtown and neighborhood service nodes prioritize a strong vibrant downtown and compatible neighborhood service nodes throughout the city. Goal number three, objective 3.05, neighborhoods, protect and preserve existing neighborhoods from incompatible land uses and developments. Objective 3.11, historical preservation, encourage the protection of historical buildings and sites. Goal number four, administrative environment. Objective 4.06, public participation. Strive for community involvement that is broad-based and inclusive, encouraging public participation in the decision-making process. Finding B9, that the public facilities and utilities are available and adequate for the proposed use concerning stormwater, streets, water, sewer, and fire. None of those departments had any objection to this zone change. Finding B10, that the physical characteristics of the site make it suitable for the request at this time. It's been an existing building that's been there for many, many years. Finding B11, that the proposal would not adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood with regard to traffic, neighborhood character, and/or existing land uses based on what the neighborhood commercial points out what can be used in that particular area, which is much more restrictive than the present zoning. Let's see here. That's it. The Planning Commission pursuant to the aforementioned fines, that the request of David Rucker for a zone change as described in the application should be approved. And any of my commissioners can add any other comments or things that I might have missed?
No. The way this started out, he made the motion. So are you still making the motion and you're doing the findings?
I just was doing the findings.
I'm just asking, so we don't get confused here.
I, I light-heartedly made, I, I made the motion seriously, and then light-heartedly, since you offered, said, let's include in the motion that Mr. Messina-
Oh, okay.
Mr. Messina will do the, the findings. So it's all rolled into a motion.
So then, are you going to second the motion?
Sure, yeah, I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by-
Are we good with that?
Chairman Jordan? I think Tom has to be, make the motion, since he's doing the findings, and somebody has to second it. Which you can second, if you'd like.
Second.
Well, I'm debating whether to give Warren something to look at when he gets back from vacation. But it probably would be easier if you, if you go ahead and make the motion, if that's okay with Commissioner Ingles, and Ingles could second it.
Well, maybe John can, maybe John can withdraw his motion.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion and do the findings.
Okay, so we have a motion by Messina. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Ingles. Okay. That'll be simpler now.
Okay.
Now, do we have any discussion? Okay. Roll call.
Bulby?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Messina?
Yes.
Luttrell?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Okay, so then that's approved unanimously, ZC 2-14. See, I guess that's it until our August meeting. We have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're adjourned.